Call the meeting to order, please stand for the pledge.
Justice strong.
Will Paul please?
Here.
Here.
Here. There is no public comment this evening, so we'll move on to approval of meeting minutes from the February 5th, 2025, Cripple Creek City Council regular meeting. Has council had the opportunity to review the minutes? Any changes or revisions needed? All right, can I get a motion, please?
I'd make a motion to approve the meeting minutes from February 5th, regular meeting.
Take it.
Go please.
Yes. Yes.
Yes. Reports, city administrator, thanks, I'm Tim.
Heard enough from me, Mayor, but Carol has something to.
Letting me have a few minutes during your city admin report. Mayor Durham, city council. I just wanted to come in front of you tonight to introduce Charlotte Smith, our newest addition to the HR team. And I would really like to thank you for recognizing and having that support, so I truly appreciate it. Just a little bit on Charlotte, she graduated from the University of Texas at Arlington with a Bachelor of Arts with an emphasis in organizational communication. Her most recent experience included managing marketing and public relations for a municipal economic development organization. And she's also worked in the HR field as training and learning management systems administrator. And has experience as a recruiting analyst and onboarding specialist. So we're so excited to have her on board. So I just really wanted to introduce her to you guys. And then we are currently making appointments with the department, so I'll have that opportunity to show her all of our operations within the city. Make connections with our staff and just from members of management perspective.
And she's the better half, stand up Jonathan. There's the other half. Okay.
Congratulations, welcome.
Always have sex on.
Anything else you? Finance Director Moni Edwards.
Good evening, Mayor Durham and council members. Tonight I'd like to report on the December gaming industry numbers. The Division of Gaming has released the December numbers. And there's a very good theme that runs through this report. As on a statewide basis, the entire industry's AGP was up $10.6 million or 12.6% from November. Ripple Creek's December AGP compared to November was up 2.5 million or 19%. Compared to December of 2023, AGP was at 2.1 million or 15.7%. Compared year-to-date to 2024, AGP was up 8.4 million or 12.1%. Coin in and table drop compared to November of 2024 was up 27.3 million or 17.1%. And compared to December 2023, coin in and table drop was up 17.5 17.5 million or 10.3%. Year-to-date compared to 2024, coin in and table drop was up 63.6 million or 9.2% over 2023. Year-to-date, market share increased to 16.5% over November and compared to 2023 was up 1.9%. So there was a lot of.
Thank you.
Thanks, Moni.
We'll be moving on to presentations, we're going to change the order up just a little bit, but not quite yet. So actually, we'll start with the first quarter update from Newmont line.
Thank you, Mayor Durham and council members, good evening. It's for me a little bit of a sad occasion because it's the last time that I stand here personally, but then also from Newmont. You may recall that early in last year, you want to announce that we were going to divest certain non-core assets. And CCNV was one of those assets. I wonder if we can get the presentation on. And right through the year during our presentations, I kept you up to date about the process and the progress that we were making. During our last presentation that was on the 4th of December. I told you that we were close to a decision. I couldn't tell you that we were only two days away from a decision, but two days later it was announced that SSR was going to take over from Newmont. Just trying to figure out if I, that mostly helps. Yep. Yeah. So dramatically, I was going to say SSR is taking over from Newmont. SSR is a US-based company based in Denver. In fact, the officers, head officers, just two stories about that of of Newmont. They have a very experienced team, particularly around takeovers, that's their model. They take smaller operations and make them more profitable and get more life out of them. With this takeover, they will now be the third largest gold producer in the United States. They also have mines just for, as a matter of interest. The Kuppler mine there in the orange dot there in Turkey, there in the Middle East. Also in Nevada, they have the Marygold Mine. In Canada, a little bit north there, they have in Saskatchewan, they have the CB Mine. And then down south, the very bottom yellow dot is the Puna Mine in Argentina. With this takeover, we do not anticipate, and I mean, by now it's so close that I can say with certainty that there will be any layoffs from Newmont, that we want to keep, retain all the employees, which is makes sense. They operate on very similar principles as we do. They treat their communities and their people and the environment and the regulators similarly to what Newmont does. And that was one of the requirements of us selling our mine to somebody that continued to mine mine responsibly. Over the last few weeks, number of weeks since the 6th of December when this was announced, they've gone through several processes. One of those had been to get regulatory approval. And that that went quite easy, you know, it's a US company, they over US companies, so no problem there. And in the meantime, we've been working on the practicalities of one company taking over another, as you can imagine, in particular on the IT backbone system payroll. All the human resources side of things, lots of questions and lots of things to change. So that has been progressing over the last weeks. Similar to being unable to last time say exactly when the settlement take place, I cannot say when I hand over the keys. But it's it's also very close. A new general manager has been appointed, so next time he will he will be standing here. In fact, I'm trying to get into the open house that will that will be up at the Heritage Center next week. And maybe you can meet some of you. As I know that SSR has met with you, for example. So they want to very quickly integrate and meet everybody in the in the community. So just finally to say, Newmont has been operating here for for close on 10 years now. It's been a great relationship with the community at large, with the regulators, with all the officials. It's been a very productive relationship and we are leaving with difficulty. This is a great mine. This is a lot of good, very good people that work here and it's going to be with a with a sore heart. I said earlier, I'm going to cry, but it's a sore heart that I leave the people behind, but I'm also happy to be leaving them in good hands. So that's from me, I'm going to hand over.
Good evening, council. All right. So I guess just building off of what Johan said related to reclamation and closure. So with the transition of ownership, all of our permits, as they are currently approved and obligations are still in place. The change in ownership does not change our obligations and commitments around permits and all of the details within the closure plan. So just reassuring folks of that. As you recall, we submitted Amendment 14 late last year, well, actually mid last year. And it it opened up to public comment period and that closed in November of last year. Currently, DRMS is reviewing that application and we anticipate potential approval from them sometime late this year. And then at that point in time, the application will be submitted to the Teller County Planning Department for their review process, which typically takes about a year is is our plan. With Amendment 14, again, no significant changes to the closure plan there. Same same, you know, typical closure. I guess practices, which is resloping the things that you see in the view shed, all of the steep slopes around the site. Applying top soil and then seeding and planting trees, so no anticipated changes there. And there will also be a public engagement and comment period as part of the Teller County process. So we'll be, you know, out here in the community and also presenting to you all, as well as with the county, more details of those plans as as that review process progresses. Looking forward for for our plans this year, we plan to continue concurrent reclamation with a focus on expanding test plots that you see here in the photo at the Akosa area, which is the northwest end of the the property there. We'll monitor the performance of those test plots to make sure that our goals are for reclamation are achieved. And we're also progressing site-wide closure studies to inform ongoing reclamation activities and may make adjustments to make sure that they will be successful. Any questions for me before I hand it off to Caitlin?
I heard some rumblings about Akosa being shut down, is there any truth to that?
It's not shut down necessarily, we are not placing waste rock on that facility currently this year. That was a an order from DRMS and we actually, we worked with them to come up with a stipulated agreement to to temporarily not place material on the waste rock facility this year.
Is there any any discussion, maybe the new company possibly looking at going underground, is that even, is that just off?
I, we really haven't been able to engage with them about details of the business plan or potential changes until the deal is closed, which we anticipate to happen soon. And once that happens, then we'll start talking about potential changes. I wouldn't rule out underground, we were permitted to to construct a portal for exploration activities underground. This was several years ago, probably 2018 maybe is when that was permitted. Newmont did not pursue moving forward with constructing that portal. But it it is permitted and I'd never say never, so. Any other questions? All right, thank you all. As always, they save the best for last. So I'm going to talk about, can you? No, just me. So every every quarter I come and we talk about community investment and and Q1, we kind of wrap up the the year end. So our 2024 community investment, our total company contributions were $448,476 and that's spread through these these various buckets. So our community investment committee allocated $200,000 discretionary in-kind funding, $8,600. And that's for things like yearbook ads, angel tree shopping, things like that. Scholarships, 15,000, our annual school grant funding, 50,000 to support the Cripple Creek Victor School District, Woodland Park and the Canyon City School Districts. The Legacy Fund Company Match was $94,875 to match those employee donations. Newmont's contribution to the Endowment Fund was 30,000 and then our environmental support to the Trout Unlimited Abandoned Mine Land Reclamation Program was $50,000. Our 2024 volunteer hours, we had 116 hours plus 15 hours delivering the Alaska Resource Education to students in the Cripple Creek and Woodland Park School Districts, so that's the Jelly Belly Geology, Mine a Cookie, teaching young students about mining in in fun ways. So this kind of breaks it down, obviously, our largest expenditure in the community investment budget was that Legacy Fund Match. 90,000 went to Teller County Organizations and those are things like Shop With a Hero, Community Partnership, things that organizations that really benefit. Purple Creek, Victor, Goldfield, Woodland Park. All cities, Colorado, the $50,000, that was our Trout Unlimited contribution. Cripple Creek and Victor received 45,000 and those are organizations that like the childcare, community caring childcare facility, because it really benefits Cripple Creek and Victor, specifically the Southern Teller County region. Things like the Adult Career Connection Center is really, really Cripple Creek and Victor. And the Cripple Creek Victor School District is next, 39,800. And those are for things, we did some STEM scholarships. The school grant, stuff like that, our Endowment Fund, the Woodland Park School District, Cripple Creek specifically in those organizations. Are things like the museums that are very specific targeted in Cripple Creek for for their tourism efforts, for your tourism efforts, excuse me. And then the rest is is broken down, we're really trying to refocus our our funding on the the areas that are impacted most by our mining operations, and that is Cripple Creek and Victor with limited focus given to Woodland Park and Fremont County, just based on the number of employees and contractors that live there and or drive through through the area. This is just our community investment committee breakdown, so we received 55 applications requesting $823,518. We approved 30 of those totaling $200,000, excuse me. I'm proud to say 83% of that stayed in Teller County, I think that's an improvement if we look back at past years. The Teller Fremont County, that was the Gold Belt Byway, so it's kind of, there was there was projects in Teller County and there was also projects in Fremont County, so it was a little bit of both. The Teller El Paso Counties was Project Healing Waters, so that supports veterans in El Paso and Teller County. So again, a little bit of both, so I wanted to call those out separately. And then El Paso County received 4%, Fremont County received 8%, and the majority of that is the school grant fund that the Canyon City School District receives. Any questions about community investment, I know I blew through that pretty quickly. Nothing? Just thank you. Thank you. Yeah. Our upcoming community engagement, so we are having a community open house at the Aspen Mine Center, February 27th from 5:00 to 6:00 PM. So come by and and have a little meet and greet with us. The Aspen Mine Center is graciously providing the space and the food, so thank you Ted. And then here's our contact information, if you have any questions, I hope you all know how to get ahold of us. Any questions for anybody before we?
I just want to say thank you to Newmont for not only all the community investment, but the discretion in identifying the buyer. As Johan said, I did meet the executives a couple of months ago and they just seem like they're going to be just as supportive as the community as seen by us, so. And we as a community certainly appreciate that.
Okay, so we're going slightly out of order in my presentations at this time, presentations of lifesaving awards to three officers, Chief Bright.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you for allowing me to take this opportunity to recognize these officers for their actions on duty. Can I get Officer Keith Hoyle and Officer Roseanne? On Saturday, January 25th, 2025, at approximately 1:14 AM, Officers Hoyle and Kimbrough were dispatched to a local residence for an overdose. Both officers arrived at approximately 1:16 and entered the residence and were directed to a bedroom where they encountered an unresponsive male on the floor. Officers attempted to rouse the male with no response. After prompt assessment, Narcan was administered to the male. And after three more additional doses of Narcan, we're given the male regained consciousness. The man was awake and responding to questions when fire and EMS arrived. The actions of the the actions of Officers Hoyle and Kimbrough were instrumental in saving this man's life. I am proud and honored to present lifesaving awards to both Officer Keith Hoyle and Officer Roseanne Kimbrough. Page.
As grateful as I we are for the recognition, this was truly a team effort. It's never just one individual when it comes to situations like this. And we should be thanking fire, medical and dispatch justice.
All I have to say is it's not about the recognition or anything like this, I mean, it feels really nice, but I'm just here to do my job. And when I decided to become a police officer, this is what I was hoping for, to help people and be there for those that need us the most. Thank you for the opportunity.
Hey, Officer Eric Fulmer. So on February 8th, 2025, at approximately 6:58 AM, Officer Bromer was dispatched to report of a man on the ground at the entrance of the Golden Nugget Hotel. Officer Bromer arrived at approximately 7:01 AM and attempted to wake the man with no response. Officer Bromer saw that the man was not breathing and began CPR. Officer Bromer also gave the man Narcan and continued CPR until fire and EMS arrived. The man was flown to a hospital in Colorado Springs. Officer Bromer's prompt response and quick quick actions provided this man with the best chance of survival. I'm honored to present this lifesaving award to Officer Eric Bromer. Narcan, yes. I wish I'll be in sports. No, standing.
Keith, I just want to say, I know in in the world today, there are differing views on law enforcement, but I am so deeply appreciative of all of you and you have my support. I feel so much safer knowing that you are keeping us safe in the community. I appreciate the fact that you live one block away from me. Thank you for that, but thank you all of you, seriously, I mean that with all my.
We've got, we've got a great group of people and I could be proud of them. This was, you know, this is something I'd like to start, you know, soon after something like this and and get that recognition out. They can say it, but it means something to be recognized in in public, so thank you for allowing me the time to do that. Thank you.
Moving on to our final presentation is the EV charging stations. Joel, is it you, Rono? Okay, awesome.
Thank you for, we apologize for the voice, I've been doing a lot of speaking lately. That was a tough act to follow, so this way it'll be as exciting. But thank you for the time, saving Mayor, council members. We're very excited to work with the city of Cripple Creek and deploying EV charging stations here in the town. That's the business we're in, don't ask people to pay for them, we pay for everything. And we're very excited to begin working with with you all, so thank you. We had some some locations selected that we'd already submitted to the the state, we're charging at Colorado. And they've approved six locations and so we'll show you those locations, they threw us worth images. And you all can take that back and decide which ones to hunt or not. The one thing, I was I was here last October and I spoke with Jeff and I said, you know, there are some options on the chargers and for us again, it's really kind of up to you guys and what you want, so. This is a, this is actually an example of what we get an airport, of course, you guys have airport here, but you know, what we do is we manage the messaging on screens to bring, you know, traffic, visitors, tourists into town, so it actually got a deployment going on in Colorado Springs. And I spoke to Jeff about you can put some Cripple Creek advertising on those screens to bring, we can bring posters down. So on the right is the charger, it's a level two charger, so kind of a slow, you know, triple charger. But this is the one that, you know, is already approved, ready to go. Those are the ones that's got a, it's got a, it's got a retractor on top, so you're not going to have cords on the ground. So I'll get to the end, you can see the location we picked for those and then. This is the other option that we've got, so that is a Samsung 55 minutes display. I know you've got some ordinances on the on the signage, but I do want to present some options. Part of our also giving back is it's an eight slot rotation, so we would give the city two of the slots. Messaging, you know, recognition, even, you know, whatever you want, they're they're yours. In addition to that, there is a feature built in, and again, this doesn't cost the city anything, a feature built in where, you know, if it's, you know, it's Frank or whoever it may be, that if there's some emergency, gas leak, you know, whatever that may be, there's a text short code that can be sent to the screens and it serves all the content says, you know, emergency and then whatever that emergency message is, so. These are all controlled, you know, we can make standards bright. These are, it's interesting to cut this very special glass on them. I was at a conference in the Samsung representative baseball bat to it. I swung as hard as I could, the bat just bounced off the screen. And so, and right, and then the coating on it is actually anti-graffiti, not that I've seen any here in town, but it's wiped off. So, so you know, this is another option, they're prepared to, you know, pay for these, put these in as well, some of the city wants and just a few more of our chargers, there's another one outdoors. Just a few more of our chargers. There's another one outdoors. Couple of different ways to pay. They can pay through an app. They can pay into a tap credit card. We've got options. You know, one of the things I was geeking around was. Maybe we make, you know, if you've got city residents, maybe they get a different rate than visitors. We've got that kind of flexibility in what we do on the charging station. So. Well, skip past these pieces. This is just the end of, in wind design, same displays, actually just different mounts, the chargers. We do do commercial solar and a couple of discussions with your team about that on some other projects, but. It's myself and our CFO. We are based out of Dallas, Texas. And, okay, one last thing. So these screens, you know, you've probably seen them because these are the screens that are on the drive-through of every McDonald's across the country. That exact same amount, the exact same screen. So, you know, they're Samsung. They're not a small brand. You know, it's kind of like that old saying, you know, forty years ago, nobody gets fired for buying IBM. Samsung product, they stand behind their, they stand behind their material, their equipment. So. Okay, so here's Google Earth that we put together. The orange, the orange dots are the locations that the state of Colorado has approved grants. On, for these charging stations. So you see that you've got the medical clinic on the left. I think that is the Parks and Rec on the, the next, I'm going left to right. There's the Parks, Jail Museum, I'm sorry. Yeah. There's the Fire Department, Myers Avenue, and then all the way to the right, Heritage Museum. So those are the ones that the state had approved. We can resubmit it to the state, but those are the ones they approve now. So. And I've got, I've got some close-ups of each one. So you can see, if you'd like me to go ahead and proceed to those.
Just to comment, Joel, the one, the fire department is actually not our least lot. That's the one that we, well, we own half the lot by the B D. The other half is owned by the people that have that building that Bronco Billy's. So that site is actually on their parking lot. We can't approve that part of the lot. So. So that one will probably have to be relocated. But the other ones are. Yeah. On city right of way or on city problem.
So there's the Heritage Center. You see, like, we've got the transfer over there, just a little bit slowed down from the parking lot. One of the state's requirements is that these were all ADA accessible. So that may be a little bit of a challenge to somebody who's, there's only, you know. It's two plugs and some of them might be on the sidewalk. So. The, the chargers are ADA accessible. As they, as they're built, you know, they don't, the, anybody in Willshire can reach and grab it without having to get up. So. So. That was the Myers Avenue. I apologize. I did not get the transfer on that one, but it's actually just straight down. So we'd have to trench up. And I think, I don't think that land was available or that belonged to the city either. So we'd have to do a little negotiating with some folks, but.
That's either going to be trouble ground or century.
So they have to bring the electric from the alley down there and get up, move it. So that would have to go, get an easement to go across either century or the.
People be willing, no? You think they'd be willing? We'll have to ask. So do these stations, are they can charge one car or two cars or?
We're putting two and, two and four in some locations, just depending on availability. So. I mean, I'm happy to put four in all of them. It just, you know, it was really how much power is left on the transformer location. So.
So on a station like this where you're parallel working, how does that work with two, two vehicles? Separate, separate two.
There's that fire. Yeah. You can see the transfer over there. Actually, I noticed it had changed from the first pictures I saw to now. There's ice transformers on the ground rather than the ones laid out for the bowl. So. You know, if it's something where I need to go talk to them, I'm having to do that. I'm having to come back anytime because it's like a from Dallas. So. I have to go talk to them. And then there's the park. So. Transformer right there on the bowl, right by the. Yeah, so that, that would look pretty similar.
So are we talking about the, either the, the ones with the screens or just the?
Yes. And this was, you know, again, I know it's not a decision for this evening, but you know, just wanted to give you the option and.
I just wanted to throw out there, I think if we were to proceed, having one with a screen up at the Heritage Center, that's the person people hit when they get to town. And that could be an opportunity for. Wayfinding or advertising.
You mentioned wayfinding.
I did, right. So with the touchscreen capability on them, right, we can load up, you know. And, you know, I could leave it up to you all to which location show up on the map. You know, they can push it. The Samsung technology is pretty slick where you go, okay, you're here. Get to the street and have to get over there. So.
I think that's, we was brought up, there's a lot of locations in the historic history that these, some of these, just to be discussed.
So one thing. Just the presentation that we can discuss. Y'all give me direction on what you want to do. And if, you'd have to go to, on a agenda. To put these type signs in, if that's what the council wants. We'd have to look at the sign ordinance to see what is available, what's not. But yeah, it's your, your call. But we can go down that road. He just wanted to present tonight and give you options and then we can talk about it and then.
And just to confirm, there is no cost to the city.
I know they get used a lot. We have.
Yeah, we're going to take those out. They're not, that's leased property. The city doesn't own it. So we weren't going to put any there for permanent because it is leased property. The property is for sale. So we thought we wouldn't put any back in that parking lot. That's a nice place to have them. But they'd be putting something in that the property sells, you know, they can get out of our lease at any time. So. That's why we were hesitant to put, they could put them in and a month from now they tell us, okay, we sold the property, take them out. Then they're out that loss or. Putting, it is a good location, but.
What is the maintenance look like as far as like warranty contract tells?
They take care of all the maintenance as well. So we've got a, the contract, there'll be installation work. They'll come check monthly. These, these chargers are all connected to the internet. So we actually will monitor them remotely in Dallas. So like, they'll go one to town before you guys ever know. And we'll get the dispatch out. So the warranty, we will put a ten year warranty on all the chargers. So who knows what it's going to be like ten years from now, but you know, the cost was not that significant, the increase for us to go ahead and push it out to ten years. So.
We did with Aaron, looked down that trail of getting, because they offered that we would get a portion of, can't do that in Colorado. So there's no pay. We could get a fee like.
Yeah, there is some fee. I think we've got in our agreement already.
Yeah, the fee's already been approved. But just so the community knows too, the city is not really getting anything for the sale of the electricity because we're not allowed that in Colorado.
For the relocation of the one by the fire department, I don't know if this would be a possibility, but you have a lot of people who want to walk in part past the. Public works and stuff out in that one, you know, to, you know, property. How much traffic? No traffic out there.
I also like the one by the medical center, just having one on, on each side of town as they're coming in.
That is our property. So you could put.
But I was just wondering, is it, is it a little too far out of town if you're at your car charging there or you, like this shit car shuttle?
So, yeah, that's a great.
Sound like right downtown.
That's a great question. Yeah, we. We were working with a casino group out of the Pacific Northwest. And the first thing they said was, oh, we want the biggest, fastest chargers you guys have. You want the gamers to sit at the table longer? Or do you want them out in twenty minutes? And so, no, no, never mind. We want the slowest chargers. Yeah, that was a very quick turnaround on the part, but. Yeah, we do have, we do have DC fast chargers. And I'm happy to come back and, you know, visit with you about that if that's something you're interested in. Typically, these are three hundred sixty kilowatt DC fast chargers. So, you know, on. The newer cars, newer electric cars are coming out twenty four, twenty five. You know, it's a fifteen to twenty minute, eighty percent charge per vehicle. So.
So at a, at a location like that, medical center where you're only in there half an hour and forty five minutes, a fast charger.
There's not an incentive to stay there longer.
I, I would say, as you all consider, you know, E V charging stations in the city, like whether it's, you know, city, the relationship with us or even the businesses. You know, the, the buying pattern of drivers is very different than the gas people. You know, I use an example of, you know, if I go to Costco. And I'm not on E or a quarter tank, I don't fill up. But the E P drivers tend to plug in just because they're charging there. So their, their buying pattern, their behavior is a little quite different. Sometimes it's just for the good parking space, you know. Really, that's, that's all it is, right? They'll take it.
I was, I was supposed to ask you, so you use your credit card, you tap it, you start charging. Is there something that comes on there and say your car is charged?
Or it does?
It does say, okay, you're ready to go.
Yeah. And then if they have the app, so Loop is a manufacturer we partner with. They're out of El Segundo, California. I'm very, very close with their executive team. And, you know, basically whatever I ask for, we get from them. So in terms of changing functionality. So in that case, it's a, there's a. It's dwell time charge, but it's optional. It's something we can turn on or turn off. It's not there. And so, you know, i- if it's the. Well, we spoke earlier today about chargers that were on the streets. We probably want, I'm thinking we disable the chargers at midnight. Right. And then they get a notice. Yeah, your car is charging duds for the, the snow, the, the plowing. You know, we've got that kind of flexibility into the technology. So.
The ordinance is one to five. They can't be parked on the street. So, so they can turn them off. So they can't charge.
They'll send a notice to them saying, you know, your car, our success to opt to whatever we suddenly put on there.
And just to clarify, if there's like an emergency message, Frank can just slide right in and.
It's called delegation. Sure, Mayor, I'll take.
Sounds great. It's, you know, pretty.
I just want to give you all some options. Like I said, we're ready to go as soon as you are. You know, I stay in close to Jeff and so, you know, as soon as I hear that you guys are, you want to look at these six, you know, take some off, ask us to look at some others. Okay, thank you very much. Installation. So we're ready to install as soon as the ground's ready to take into.
How long does the installation take?
Two days. The electricity's there. Yeah, it, it's not a long, it's not a long time. So. Very much.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to. Business agenda item eight. Consider approval of resolution twenty twenty five dash zero two, resolution approving the city of Purple Creek policy and procedures. Regarding access to public records and setting forth the maximum fees that may be charged for public, public records requests. Under the Colorado Open Records Act, C R S twenty four dash seven two dash two hundred dot one, city clerk Melissa. It was brought to my attention that we can approve this resolution tonight. So we don't have to keep coming back to council when. The state changes the Cora request fees. So it will always just align with the state says we can do. I like it. Easy for me. Yep. Anything to make it easier for you, please. You, you so much. Have made any discussion? Questions?
So Alicia helped to resolutions on the next one for the B D together. So she's online. Aaron's not. So we're waiting if you have questions.
I'm here in case you have any questions.
Do, did these, both items fall under the same resolution? Just to clarify, because. They are too separate. Oh, it's on the back. I'm sorry. All right, if there's no question.
I would make a motion that we approve resolution twenty twenty five dash O two.
One second.
Go please. House of the Club.
Yep.
House of Bowman.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Brown.
Yes.
Mayor Durham. Yes. On agenda item B, consider approval of resolution twenty twenty five dash zero three. A resolution approving the city of Purple Creek policy and procedures regarding access to criminal justice records and setting forth the maximum fees that may be charged. For criminal justice records requests under the Colorado Criminal Justice Records Act, C R S twenty four dash seven two dash three zero one, dispatcher supervisor Avery.
So I just listened to Melissa on this and because before I was also covering our record, we have a few additional things under the Criminal Justice Record Act. And the primary move for it is to raise it to the current state level. But also maybe so we don't have to make a resolution every single time we change it. So we were together on this.
I make a motion that we. Or I jump on the guns. Approved resolution twenty twenty five dash O three.
Second.
Vote please.
Yes. Yes.
Yes. That being said, that concludes our meeting. Thank you all so much for being here and we are turned.